Okay, we are recording. We are live, just watching for our attendees, the audience to show up.
Okay, welcome everybody to the planning board meeting for January 4th. I'm going to begin by calling the role, Alden Park.
Here.
Beth Delisle. Not here yet.
Well, Cook.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers is going to be absent. Don Rogers.
Here.
Richard Jaeger. Not here yet. And Rick Tander here. So we have tonight on our agenda. First of all, we're going to begin with our annual election of officers. Then we're going to go into public hearings and we have three public hearings tonight. Rob Thompson at 100 State Street for a special permit. Stephen J. Lewis, 226 Market Street, a special permit amendment. And Douglas DeShane, 22 to 24 Market Street, special permit amendment. Then we have on the agenda a request for minor modification. At 3 Doyle Drive, however, we've got a request from the applicant to continue that to the first February meeting. First February meeting, yes. We have approval events and other updates from the chair or planning director. So. Just will begin with the election of officers and just I want to begin by just going over what the roles of the officers are. The chair is obviously somebody who conducts most of the meetings. Also meets before the meeting with Andy and the planning staff to prepare for each meeting's agenda. And from time to time, we have our other meetings on specific issues with the planning staff. Vice Chair. Very similar, Vice Chair takes over for the chair in the chair's absence. And does the same things the chair does, meets with the planning staff, Andy, before each meeting and meets periodically on specific issue. And the third officer is the secretary. The secretary not too much to do. Is responsible with the rest of us for reviewing the minutes for accuracy and conveying any edits to the notator. From time to time, the secretary to review the findings and special general special conditions on the permit, especially in cases where the the application is very complicated. I've heard from a number of planning board members who do not wish to be considered for officer positions. And I have spoken with Bob and Alden about their potential interest. And I've been vice chair, I would like to move up to chair if that is the consensus of the board and Bob has agreed to come up as vice chair and Alden as secretary. If there are any other members who wish to be considered for any of those positions, please speak now. And.
I'm sorry, we note for the record, we have Beth Delisle and Richard Jaeger join us remotely.
And I should have mentioned that Beth has Beth has been acting as secretary for the last year and she has indicated that she does not want to continue with that role. And I guess in that case, if there's if there are no other nominations, I would accept a motion for that slate of officers.
So.
Notated motion?
Second.
Maybe second, thank you. So, compared we are hybrid, we need to do this as a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather's absent, Doug?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We will try to do our best to make you proud. Okay, the first public hearing is the public hearing for 100 State Street.
Hey, well, so I'll have the graphics here on the screen if you want to speak to it, just do whatever background you have. Pardon? Sorry, if you just want to give whatever background you have to the board, I'll have the visuals up on camera for you.
Oh, okay.
Speak at the podium.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Well, thank you. We're at 100 State Street. Right across from the Dalton quote and next to the municipal parking garage, parking lot there. As you see on the highlighted green. And that's our private entrance. We have a needed driveway. And that's our entrance with the iron railing. The problem we've been having, the reason that we're here is that that's a three-story brick building built in about 1800. And we get a lot of rain coming down from the roof. And it soaks us as we go in and out. So we've gone through a series of porticoes, I think architecturally it's called a bracket. This was what we originally looked at. This is the building. Let's see, this is the front of the building. As you see, it has a portico columns. Fairly flat roof pitched over to the right with the downspout that leads off to the right. This is a view of our entrance. The front of the building and State Street is on the left. And what we're composing is to address this entrance here with a with a roof and columns. To mirror the front of the entrance. This is a look from State Street. The entrance that we're talking about is on the right. We would have eight-inch diameter wooden columns. Flat roof. And we would maintain the iron railings there. It says wooden, but we're going to go with iron because that's what's in place, what's that's what's in front of the building. A little more of the dimensions of things. And a little closer up look of what we're looking at doing. Basically, we took a look at the front of the building. We said, let's try to make this the same as much as we can on this side of the building. It'll give us some protection from the rain. There are no gutters on the roof. So again, the railings will be iron. We're going to maintain the granite steps that are there. It's a very attractive building and again, it's a needed driveway about 40 feet from State Street. Some close-ups of the landing was the columns and the roof. Questions, comments?
Since we're done.
Sure. Kind of the perhaps my hearing needs a room for repair, so.
Really?
Have to listen very cold.
We use a microphone that'll make it easier for folks at home to hear. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can someone first? I'll come close down. Just game lines. That's okay, yes, as Andy said, I need to speak to the microphone for folks that are external on Zoom, etc. So my one question is, help me understand, did you consider, and if so, what were the thoughts of why not use a gutter if your primary concern was water when it rains for you to enter into your residence?
Yes.
So why did you, did you consider that or why not? Why did you not go through with it as compared to?
The major concern was the was rain coming down on our head as we entered the building.
I don't, can we have a gutter? I'm Carol.
You need to come up to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please identify something.
My name is Carol Thompson. I live on State Street as well. The reason that we can't we cannot have a gutter on that roof, what we were told, because it's not historically correct.
And again, I'm not going to debate that back right now. The only thing I would say, and that may be the case, but I would perhaps throw out that how is this addition any more or less obtrusive or historically correct, etc., than having a gutter, at least on that one side?
Well, there's more than just the rain coming down from the gutter because it faces the north side. We get a lot of wind and rain coming in from the north. We get a lot of precipitation just right there. So we were trying to find a way to make it look good and give us some protection. If that makes sense.
Sure. No, it does. And without the protection of the roof, we can't even get out of the door in the winter time. Because it comes straight down and it turns icy. And then we have a hand, we have our hand railing right outside the door, which we have to hold on to to get down the stairs. And so it makes it, and this is our really only makes it, because if we go out the front door or the back door, that's not where our car is and it's icy, yes. So that's the reason why we had a diverter now that we finally got this year, right? Well, the diverter. And that has helped a little bit in terms of it doesn't come straight down on the porch anymore. It goes to the side. But the roof wouldn't really help a lot because it's it's really difficult if you were there, even in the summertime when it's raining. If you wanted to be inside with groceries, it's, you know, it's anybody's guess how you're going to do that.
Yes, the entrance goes right into the living room. There's no, there's no mudroom. It's, it's the door and then you're in the living room. So we're trying to get some protection. I hope that those entries, entries done.
Thank you.
Sir, just a couple of detailed questions if I could ask. Andy, would it be possible that there's no man a little bit? Yeah. So I noticed that the two columns sit at different elevations in terms of the top of the steps.
Yes, there's asymmetrical, although when you look at it from the street and if you've driven by the property, there are Mount Baton Jupiter's between this doorway and State Street.
I understand.
When I say the.
You know, the the point is, it's a little atypical.
Yes, it's asymmetrical. It gives, there's two benefits to that. It gives us a little more protection from the rain. It also allows a little more space. That platform there is pretty much square at four feet on the side. And if we were to move that eight-inch column on the right off that step and onto the landing, now we're down to eight and eight or 16 inches off.
Let me put your mind at ease about that. I'm not suggesting that you move the columns closer to the gen. Not suggesting that you make the roof smaller. What I am suggesting is that you find a way to sit that right-hand column on a base that allows the column detail at the base of the columns to be at the same elevation.
I see.
So I think, I think just on purpose, respecting the architecture of a dual building, that would be the appropriate thing to do. The second question I have is about the columns themselves and whether they are intended to be the same as the columns at the front. Are they the same diameter? Are they the same detail in terms of? Not sure whether they're included columns or not, but you know, are they intended to be the same in appearance as their?
They are eight-inch diameter. The ones in the front are 12.
And in terms of the detail of the column, are they, are they similar?
They are identical. They're they're available to purchase like this. They don't have to be built. And we, we chose the smaller size and keeping with the smaller footprint.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
There is one.
Richard?
Thank you, Chair. So I applaud that you're doing a wonderful solution and an elegant design solution for a wonderful building. So I all should be proud of that approach. If I'm looking at the drawings correctly, though, I'm seeing a downspout, am I not? And that's my question or concern is the downspout, is that something that needs to be done or can it, back to the question of the gutter, could a scupper be sufficient? It just seems for such a small roof plane to have a downspout for it is unfortunate. Whereas a scupper could probably suffice.
If I understand the question correctly, you're asking about the size and location of the downspout?
Whether the downspout is needed at all or if a scupper would do the job for it, and so you wouldn't need a downspout.
Well, we, we put the downspout in there because there's one on the existing front of the building which has an identical roof. A roof was membrane on it. It's possible that a downspout is not necessary. But we put one in there because it was one on the front.
Now, I saw that. It's a big, it's a bigger roof in the front and I'll defer to other members of the commission if they feel strongly about it or not. I was just raising the question that just felt objectionable given the small size of the roof, but I clearly want it to be successful in what you're trying to achieve and don't want to micro-design it.
So.
I didn't understand the question.
I, I think that I, first of all, I'm not sure I know what a scupper is. That's my first.
I'll, I'll look to members of the board who can physically be there to try to describe it, but a scupper is essentially a gutter that extends beyond and allows the water just to free fall down. So it's, it's essentially acts like a downspout, but without the downspout actually physically being there.
I know what it is now. I just. Okay, so you're saying that we don't need to have that, that we don't have to have that or?
I'm raising the question. I'm not sure what the historic rules are on this. I'm a relative newcomer to the commission, so people like Bob, you have a lot of experience on this and maybe have a thought to share on this.
Your opinion, well, I think, I think, Richard, with what you're bringing up, it's not, it's not only the downspout, but it's, I guess what I'm seeing now is a gutter that wraps around that roof that connects to the downspout.
Yes, you are. That's how I read the drawing.
Like others did, what, what that detail is as well. Is that, is that a wooden gutter? Is that aluminum gutter? What's, what's the intention?
It's, the roof is slightly the roof will be slightly tilted toward us towards State Street. And it's a metal gutter that comes down and piece into the driveway away from the building.
As drawn, it looked like it was on three sides. Is the gutter only on the one side, the sloped side that the water's running to?
I miss that.
It looks as if the gutter, is the gutter on the side that's facing State Street or is it on all three sides of the?
No, it's on the side that faces State Street. Because as we look at the building right here on the right-hand side of the door are exhaust vents or furnaces. So if we had a downspout on that side, we'd impinge on, on the furnace vents.
So I think the question was whether or not the gutter itself on the across the top there.
Oh, there's no, it's not a gutter. It's just an opening in the membrane that it's not like a gutter going around three sides. It's the roof is tilted and back. And it goes to the corner of the of the brick building and then hits the downspout. It's really not a not much of a gutter at all. Not on three sides, if that's my correction.
I guess, I guess I'm confused also about drawing. When you look at the drawing, the next one facing line.
It can be done, yeah.
That looks like, that one looks different. There was another drawing that shows the, yeah, that one. That really looks like a gutter going around under the roof.
Well, that wasn't.
The two drawings actually don't match.
Does it?
The drawing before that doesn't have that gutter.
You would see that there is an inconsistency between the drawings. I think the board is looking to make sure that irrespective of what's approved, there's consistency and clarity in whether or not the gutter is there and if so, how it's detailed. So here, there's, obviously we're hearing that the drawings disagree with each other somewhat, so we just want to make sure they get a bare minimum of clarity and what.
Is it, no, is it, nobody likes having a gutter or do you want to know where the gutter is?
No, I think it's. We had, when we did this, the architect, we had several choices. And this was the, what we decided on the final one, and I'm wondering, and perhaps they, you know, put wrong one in there. Because the gutter is only on the one side that faces State Street. And so that could be the reason for the difference because they're not the same.
And I think the point we're trying to make is that you, you've gone to great lengths here to respect the historical character of the building. And, and you know, I want to compliment you on that. The gutter, which seems to be kind of added on to all of that, really detracts
Okay.
from that.
Okay.
It's not appropriate, I don't think, in this context. And, and I would really like to suggest that you look for a solution as Richard is suggesting that both eliminates the gutter and eliminates the downspout. And you would then be left with the historic detail that you have so carefully represented.
Okay, as I understand that, if we eliminate the downspout and anything that looks like a gutter, that would be fine. We just don't know what to do with the water. We could either tilt it towards the driveway and have it spill over. Maybe that'd be the most appropriate thing to have done. If it tilted to the right of the drawing in front of you that way, like there, that might be the, that might solve the problem.
I think if you go, if you go to the last image, that's actually what it shows. Does that go next? So in the bottom there, it shows the portico roof pitched the drainwater away from steps. So I think that's what you're talking about right there. So I think, I think the, it's that next to last plan that confuses things. The plan before it, if this plan shows a gutter and a downspout, the plan before it doesn't show a gutter or a downspout. It just shows, I think, I'm sorry to say.
Correct.
Yeah, there's no gutter or downspout here. So I think this plan is, is what we're looking for.
Right.
As with the addition, as Bob said, of adding a block under the right-hand column to bring it up to the same level as the left-hand column.
Okay.
Which, if I may, leads me back to my original thought that the clarity that this elevation is drawn would suggest that there is a slight pitch to the roof. It could be concealed behind the cornice, but it's pitched away from the building. I mean, it's logical to get the water away from the elevation. And that's when the idea of just one piece of gutter, the scupper that I'm back to, can catch all that water and then at that one corner, drop it so it comes down to the ground well away from the staircase. I, I'm sorry that I'm not there to be able to sketch out this solution, but it seems that that type of solution has been done on this type of building many, many times over and would be appropriately a detailed type of solution that's acceptable to this design.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from board? Anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this? If not, then I would request a motion, and I, I think what we've heard is to eliminate the gutter and downspout, to add the block to raise the right-hand column of level with the left-hand column. So that they're the same size. And then the question about how to deal with drainage, I think, Richard's idea about a scupper or how to, how the how the detail of the, of the pitch of the roof is probably something that is a little bit more detailed than you want to deal with here and maybe leave that up to final review by the office plan director.
Sure, if I may ask just for clarification, the board would be approving the plan to just not show the gutter and the downspout. But as I understand it, perhaps allowing a scupper if that's desired by the applicant.
Yeah. I mean, I think my sense is that the proposed right-side elevation is presented to us at 2.3, but not the proposed right-side detail. And then the proposed plan views. So if we, if we were to essentially remove the, the gutter and downspout from the proposed right-side detail and add a block on the right side, that would be what we're looking for. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. So, may I have a motion to that?
So move.
Jamie? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, welcome, Alden.
Excuse me.
Oh, yes.
Discuss the motion provision. I just want to be sure that when it's written up, we're all on the same page that inclusion of a scupper is strictly optional per the applicant.
Yeah.
Thank you.
To be reviewed, and if so, to be reviewed by the panel. And we will write that out.
Understood. And well, just for your purposes, this will mean that the drawings that are referenced here are prioritizing only the one that is approved here, as you see on the screen. However, the, the written decision will clarify these two adjustments, that the removal and non-inclusion of any downwater gutter, the allowance, if you would like, of a scupper to shut the water instead of that array. And the addition required of a block to sort of raise that column and make sure it's the same height as the previous one. But other than that, it is where plans are submitted.
Okay.
Can I just interrupt for one second? I just wanted to note that that last plan sheet that shows the pitch of the roof would probably, would need to change as well, I think.
Change because you pitch away from the building or?
Is that not what we discussed that we thought it should pitch away here? Because right now it's pitching towards state.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting is that it pitches away from the building. You clearly have a talented designer and builder that can create that effect and still not have to have it be overly pronounced, even be concealed such that the cornice is what you read from the street and you don't even perceive the pitch. So, yes, you would, if the scupper idea gets accepted, that would likely suggest that the pitch changes. But again, I would leave it to the designer team to work out the logistics so it's functional and it makes sense. We're just trying to eliminate We're just trying to eliminate extra. Pieces to this design that are not in keeping.
Right, but the office could approve a change to the pitch.
If that's so warranted, right?
Yep.
Okay, that is a um incorporating that what um.
Yes.
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 Jamie?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Yeah.
Rick, yes. Okay, thank you. So um. You'll see the 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 decision from the planning office with that spelled out and I can go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next um public hearing is the application of Stephen J. Lewis. At two to six Market Street for a special permit.
Happy New Year, everyone. Uh for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tolan Kasa, thirty Green Street in Newport, on behalf of Newport Properties LLC. Whose manager is Stephen Lewis, is the chair, suggested. Uh with me also this evening is Scott Brown and Matt Langas of Scott Brown Architects. Who are the architects. So in two thousand nineteen, the board might recall, they granted an ITIF special permit to allow. Six parking spaces to be accommodated through the payment of an ITF, ITIF payment. Uh for the new mixed use building at two to six Market Street. This is the building, the brand new building at the bottom of Market and Merrimack Street. For those of you who are not on the board at the time, the building consists of five residential units. And the original proposal also included um eighteen hundred square feet of commercial space. So it's a mixed use building. The parking requirements under the ordinance were therefore nine parking spaces for the residential units. And six spaces for the commercial use. Uh the applicant at the time had proposed using a lift to accommodate ten of the spaces on site. Uh with one surface parking space uh to accommodate residential parking. Uh the as-built condition, however, if you go to the next slide, Andy, the as-built condition, however, the commercial space. Uh is changing to be actually twenty one hundred square feet. The actual ground level of the commercial space ended up being seventeen hundred and not eighteen hundred. And the applicant is proposing to add a four hundred square foot mezzanine in the area to accommodate. Uh the uh new tenant for the commercial space, which would be one tenant in the entire um commercial space. That tenant is existing in the city of Newport now and needs more space and would like to move here. Uh they offer high quality aesthetician services and we provided a letter from the host tenant in our application materials. So they're proposing to have the mezzanine to be used by their employees only, not to make it larger, so to speak. For um the clients of the new tenant. Therefore, as a result of between one hundred uh square feet, the actual commercial space parking requirements will go to seven. Increases by one space. Additionally, um and this is actually what's really driving us here today. The owners um and consultants are informed that the lift system that was originally proposed. For the ten spaces in the rear um cannot be used on the site. Given the east-west slopes across the site, the site which are needed to accommodate the stormwater system under the site. And if there are no lifts on site, there will be six and not eleven parking spaces on site. So as a result, just to kind of bring this all around. A total of sixteen parking spaces are now required, of which six will be provided on site. There are already six accounted for under your existing ITIF special permit. And therefore, we need to accommodate four more spaces. That's our request. Under the ITIF parking by law. So we are here to request four additional spaces. Under our ITIF special permit. So you can go to the next plan. Thank you, Andy. So this is the approved plan. And you see Merrimack Street at the top. And um you can see that the, as you go up Market Street, um you can go into the rear. And those were the where the location of the lifts are. Um I might add, and you can talk to Scott or Matt about this. In fact, the building is constructed to accommodate the lifts. If you go in the back of the building, I can assure you. That but for the lifts, it wouldn't be constructed in the way that it is currently constructed and laid out. So the goal, of course, was to accommodate the lifts. However, um when the lift folks came out. Because of what ends up being a slope of more than three degrees across the back east to west. Uh at different angles in different parts of the back, the lift system um won't work. So that was the approved plan. If you go to the next slide, please. So here is what we're proposing. That is upside down compared to the last plan, uh Merrimack Street's on the bottom. And you can see the parking in the back, so you can see five spaces against the building and then the six spaces tech up in the right hand. Corner, um which was also approved as part of the original plan. Under section seven A of the ordinance, um we are looking for the four additional spaces with an ITIS starting permit. Um and the criteria is essentially is the need for the space is essential or desirable to public convenience and welfare. Here, um I have to assure you that the owner isn't coming back too likely with this request. Um he was looking forward to installing the lift system. It was going to be very beneficial to his residential tenants. However, um it's not possible to install the lift system, um physically not possible to install the lift system, given the slopes. Uh in the back, uh in the various directions that are set across the back area and. If you have more detail about that, you can ask Scott or Matt. Um so therefore, the lifts can't be installed in a safe and secure manner. Uh these conditions and requirements for the system were not known at the time of permitting. And indeed, as I said earlier, the design very clearly and the actual construction was built to accommodate. Uh the lifts in the back of the building. Uh I want to add one other complicating factor here, uh which would have necessitated us to come back for a modification. Also, notwithstanding uh the ability to use the lifts. And that was the Assistant Building Inspector's determination that um he believes that a handicap space is required on site. Uh where one of the lifts will propose to be, which would have eliminated one of the parking spaces. Um we vehemently disagree with the building inspector. Uh the code, which I provided you copies of, clearly says that you don't have to provide um handicap parking space. If you have between zero and fifteen parking spaces. Um in both instances, we had well under that, we had eleven, and now we're proposing six. Notwithstanding that, the building inspector was insistent that a handicap space be provided. If you were to issue a certificate of occupancy, we do have one of the residential units occupied right now. And so instead of uh going through a six to nine month appeal of the building inspector's determination to. Either um get a variance, which would not be required, or to the Board of Building Commissioners. Um the applicant put the um handicap space on site. And so we're here um asking for an ITIF special permit for an additional eleven. Excuse me, an additional four spaces. We believe that um according to the criteria, it's desirable. I provide commercial space that is usable and meets the needs of high quality tenants in town. And then, of course, it's desirable and essential and essential not to install a system that would be unsafe. Um and certainly, the residential space, it would continue to use the onsite spaces, which of which there will be six. And there are only uh five units. Um and so that would be at least one space per residential unit. Uh the remaining spaces would be accommodated through an ITIF payment. And that's my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and Scott and Matt are also here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from board members?
Yeah, a question uh just concerning the handicap space. That seems to be required due to the commercial square footage. Uh the way I read the the ordinance that you included, is that because of the commercial space, not the residential space?
No, it's all the spaces in total, right? So that the way the regulations read, and I'm happy to have Matt or Scott come up and address that. The regulations read as total number of spaces in total. And in fact, we're not seeking an occupancy permit and haven't signed an occupancy permit for the commercial space. You require that because we wanted an occupancy permit for the residential spaces, for the residential unit upstairs.
Uh right, I see what you're saying, but the way I read it, it seemed that the handicap space was required because of the commercial. Space that that is present. But I'm just just going to confirm then, the the spaces there at the site are all designated for residential, not for the commercial.
That's correct. And that's the way the decision was written as well.
Okay.
Other questions? Well, I had a question, but it's gone, so I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the public who?
Chief McCauley, uh twenty seventh Story Brook Drive, Newport, I'm also a Newport City councillor. So then the Public Safety Committee Committee, which oversees parking. Uh we have a bit of a commander of year. And it's one of the reasons that I attended tonight. While our ordinance says that. Parking can be accommodated uh by paying into the fund within a municipal site. Uh none of our municipal buildings, uh municipal lots allow for overnight parking. The only exception being a small section of the intermodal garage that's currently full. So uh you know, there's other aspects of the ordinance that um. We need to have them a a five year lease or multi year lease and in terms of that, it's first come, first served. Uh but again, as I mentioned, the bottom part that is where overnight parking is allowed is full. And so um. I I I'm here to figure out how you guys are going to address this. Uh and handle it because I do think that the ordinance itself needs some updating, some clarification. Uh going forward, uh I do think that uh. Uh if we talk about the intermodal garage and we talk about long term plan on this, uh. The the garage may be sold at another time, so um that's not necessarily on the horizon today. But uh it is certainly part of the discussion that we talk about quite often in trying to. Uh accommodate growth within the city itself. Uh with those, with those things in in hand. Uh I I think granting an additional um uh. Access to the special permit, uh I I think should be under further review and scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Beatrice. I'm a resident. Oh, Beatrice Kelty-Watt. I'm a resident on Market Street. And I just um had a question for the extra parking permit spaces. Are those for on Market Street? Parking or is it for in the garage? I just, I don't know.
They would be for, they would be for parking. It's an interesting point that has just been raised. And and I think they wouldn't have come up uh previously because all of the on sites were residential.
Excuse me, are we closing the public comment?
I'm sorry. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Thank you for. And what I was going to say is previously wouldn't have been an issue because all of the ITIF spaces were commercial spaces. These are the residential ones. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I could address that. So the ordinance um doesn't say, it's not a standard, it's not a condition. That there needs to be available parking. Indeed, the ordinance says it doesn't guarantee parking, right? Very specifically. And if the city wants to change how it addresses the downtown parking. Then they need to remove this section or change a section of the ordinance. Otherwise, the applicant has a right to rely. On the ordinance. Indeed, one might recall that originally the ordinance prior to the ITIF area just said. If you're within three hundred feet of a public parking facility. You just, you get to count it if you're parking. You don't, I mean, that's the whole downtown and the reason the downtown is built the way it is, right? And so the idea was that with the um. With the construction of the parking garage and the creation of an entire parking, paid parking system. And frankly, the concern about the development on Waterfront West. The ITIF system was adopted to be able to say, well, look, if you're gonna. Park in the downtown or build property in the downtown that requires parking, you should help pay for. The provision of parking in the downtown generally and just get parking however you're going to get it. Like be, you know, first come, first served kind of thing, right? So I I understand the councillor's comments here, but then the city council needs to change the zoning. Because otherwise, we are allowed to rely on the zoning that has a standard and in fact, very specifically says.
It doesn't care.
Yes.
Uh so bring it back to the board. Um any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I've got a couple. I guess I'd like to um first say that without the thoroughly. Having intense discussion with the supplier that I have not, I I can't accept. Not that I disagree with the applicant and their consultants, that it is impossible to do. I can understand that perhaps if they don't follow certain standard design, a warranty may not be effective. I understand that this may be their standard design. Uh for me to say that it's a problem with something. Even with something customized with multiple other um permanences involved and actuators, et cetera. Uh and I fully agree that it may be two, three, four times the cost at this point. It's interesting when this was approved back in December two thousand nineteen. Because some of the current planning board members were present. The only person that voted for this. Was myself. Others did because it was approved. And I can assure you back then when we approved it, uh we did it, or at least I did, I did. Is I did because uh we knew that the residents that would generally park there longer than someone. Visiting the commercial, that they would have a permanent place. Uh and I do agree with um. You, Rick, and and all due respect to Council McCauley, and I also agree with the uh councillor Dean. It simply says you pay into the fund. It doesn't say oh what you could do with it. In further words, one of the uh neighbors, I hope they understand, is that when you just pay into the fund, that still means that all these people could park in the street. So if you have an issue with parking on the street, it's, it can be exacerbated. It doesn't mean they have to use their parking garage. So again, the ordinance, um if that's the way it is. Uh and I will say also, it's the ordinance, because this is special with it, it's at our option. It is not at the applicant's option to put to, we can deny that. And at this particular point, for those two reasons. Um my my vote is uh is going to be no, and I can also appreciate, you know, there's six remaining members, so. Just throw that out. Thank you.
Members, other comments?
Mr. Chair, can we address the uh possibility question?
Could we, could we just have a word?
I I would agree with Mr. Walters. You know, I think, I think there needs to be a lot more discussion about the stackers. Uh maybe it's not for the entire width of the site, maybe it's for some of the spaces. But. It, I I think you really need to show us that it's not possible to do that.
And I would just follow up with that. I was looking at the minutes of the November second meeting. I had actually asked for an engineer to confirm that the parking is impossible, that the grades, we didn't get that. I've let an email from the vendor saying that his particular system wouldn't work. But they also, the minutes also say the engineer should confirm that parking is impossible to graze. And that there are no other alternate lift products that would work, so. And I guess I would go back to. And I guess I would go back to when we first approved this, and residents came out and were concerned about. Uh, to make sure that people wouldn't be parking on the streets. My feeling was they were concerned about overnight parking. Parking is most critical in the street. So, that's why I said, the first thing that I said, um, which was that there's a difference between the commercial parking. And, and the residential parking, the life value. That said, you know, we're back into a corner in a way here, with coming in at the, again, at the last minute. With a certificate of occupancy being demanded, and, you know, where do you want the people holding it up? Uh, so, yeah, because, well. Things that may not have been carefully assessed in the initial design of the project. So, you know, I'm not, I mean, kind of have a mixed mind about this at this point.
Attorney, I believe you said there were nine residential spaces required, is that correct?
Uh, the number of residential spaces required are in that. Yeah, nine, that's correct.
So there are six certain spaces, you've gotta make the stackers work on through space.
Right, we would, we need the additional, just, just to clarify, that's correct, um, Mr. Caw. And, uh, we would need the additional space for the commercial, increase in the size of the commercial unit, right?
I understand that, but I, I'm agreeing with the point that this, this is really more about the residential parking than it is the commercial. Uh, and if, if the way of getting to nine spaces is to make the stackers work. Within grading parameters on three of those spots, I, you know, I gotta believe you can make that work.
So I'm gonna let Mr. Linus address that. I do wanna, um. Mr. Tanger, you might recall that I wasn't a part of the original hearing process, but I did go back. And review all of the minutes, and Mr. Brown just reminded me that actually there was a lot of discussion, if any. Around, from the residents, the public that appeared relative to parking. Um, so I just, you might wanna take a look at that. I just wanted to throw that out there. But, um, I'm gonna let Matt address the constructability point.
Good evening, Matt Landis, Scopron Architects. Um, so. Just to give you a little bit more background, uh, we've done, uh, we've had, uh, research into numerous systems, lifts. Stackers, four posts, one post, um, two posts even. Uh, and, and the manufacturers and installers that we've talked to normally won't, won't warranty it, but they just won't install it. It's a, it's a life safety issue. Uh, that three-degree slope is really meant for a, a typical garage installation where there's slope in one direction. Which is very easy, uh, from my understanding, based on, uh, conversations with installers, to, to shim, to. Uh, bolt down and, and have that front-to-back degree slope leveled. Uh, here we have four different slopes in each parking space, and we also have an east-to-west slope and a north-to-south slope. So, with, with this information, given that, you know, we're relying on the installers to, to, uh. To sort of tell us some more information about this, they're saying that they will install it. And from a financial perspective, uh, these lifts that we're installing are between four and five thousand dollars, which are significantly less than. Uh, paying into the ITIF, it would actually be more advantageous to install the lifts and more practical, um, so. It's, it's not really an issue, well, it is an issue of physically installing it, because we can't get a warranty from, from any manufacturer, but. The actual lift installer won't install it. So just to give you some additional, uh, background of how, how we got here. Originally, we, we had mistakenly, uh. Understood that any sort of unmet parking would be paid into the ITIF. Uh, and that was something that was missed by the design team, uh, saying that this, uh, the lift system was required. So, the moment that we found out that these lifts weren't going to work, which is actually well into construction. Uh, we thought this additional payment was under the original special permit. When we found out that the lifts weren't, you know, that these slopes were going to be an issue, the, the, um, the back door, which leads to the stairwell, which. Uh, is, is two accessible doors back there. One is for the main residence, and the other goes up to the, the stairwell. That door had already been set, so the choice was to keep that accessible door, which is required by code. Or to potentially allow one or two lifts to go in a first spot or second spot. So, I'm not even confident that that would have been a possibility. Uh, given the, the slope left to right and the dip that you would need to, uh. Sort of experience, uh, with your car going in and off the site. Our understanding is with the grades that we would have had, you would have bottomed out with the car. So, um, we've gone through, uh, extensive research with both the numerous manufacturers. It's not just the auto stackers, four-post lift, two-post lift, and, and single-post lift. Uh, none of which we're, we're able to, to figure out a, a possible option to work because of how many different slopes we're working with. If there was just a, a left-to-right slope issue. Then there would be a possibility of, of shimming one side or trimming one post. But because there's four different slopes, there's really no practical way to, to level all of that out. And, and have these installed in a safe way. It's, it's unfortunate and, and, you know, it's, it's amiss by us to, to not be here at a sooner date. But I, I'm not confident that even if we have the ability to raise that door in the back to a different elevation, that we would have been able to get the lifts. Um, at all.
Couldn't, could you explain the requirement of the ordinance?
So, uh, these, the red lines that are on either side of the space indicate the slope on that actual line. So, the, the cross slope is really what we're concerned with at the front. So this first parking space, for instance. This, the slope, each parking space has individual slopes for two reasons. One, because that's six degrees angle, and the other, because of the. Because, uh, due to the, the drainage on the site, uh, the left-to-right distance is probably about three feet from markets. Uh, yes, Market Street to Summer Street on one, the other side. So given those existing slope requirements, this is the, the grading that we were left with. So, reading this first parking space, the left-to-right cross slope is over three percent in the back, it's three point three. Towards the front, it's pretty minor, it's one point seven. Uh, and then the slopes left to right, which are point zero six, which is virtually nothing. And then one point two seven, one point two three, which is about two inches left to right. Um, so even if we were able to, let's, for instance, say, match the one point five seven. We match that at the back, which is the three point three, the entire lift would be installed in an angle. So, you wouldn't physically be able to drive on it because your car wouldn't get on that corner. Um, it's, it's certainly, it's, it's, each lift is, oh, sorry, each spot is almost. Uh, more complicated and worse the further you go along. But they're all have a, a very similar issue to, if it was installed and if it was shimmied as best as possible. There would still be a gap on one side, um, of, of the lift because of the amount of slopes that are on the side.
You only have to make it work in three spaces. And I honestly, I find it hard to believe that you can't work that pavement in a way that would allow you to do this on through spaces.
Any suggestions from the board? Any suggestions from the board that I haven't seen at this point?
Hi, Stephen Lewis, um, President, Newburyport Properties LLC. Also a resident, eleven Windwood Drive, Newburyport, Massachusetts. So I came to this board two and a half years ago with the hopes to improve the city and, and to do a really nice development, whereas we're talking about here. I came with the intention to bring the first lift system to the city. And I still want that lift system, and still, as you can see, I've, I've employed my engineers, my architects, civil. We have, uh, a, a subject matter expert that visited the site, who is what we've been told. You know, a resident expert in terms of safety relative to these lifts. All with the intention to provide my building with this parking, because I want it. I want it for my residents. I want it because I said I would give it to you, as, you know, from a, from a planning perspective. And I want it because I thought it was the right thing to do. And I've asked my team to do a very vigorous, you know, inspection. And we've been on-site many times, engineers have visited the site many times, and we've had a lot of conversations. Um, and what we're presenting to you is the reality. I asked the same thing that I just hadn't heard asked, which was. I'm sorry. Um, so I asked the same question that we just asked of, of my people, you know, how do we find a way to do the three lifts as well? And I was given the answer that we can't do it, and that we need to come here and, and, and ask for an extension or, um. A more significant allowance relative to the ITIF. So I, I wanted just to speak because I get the sense we don't have the votes now. I, I say this, um, with the hopes that I can sway one of the members, um, to see that as an owner, and again, this is not financial. I want this in my building. This is something that I came to provide and I want it. You know, unfortunately and regrettably, it isn't something. So I, I just wanted to, just at the stage, and I had not planned to do this. Um, and just, you know, appeal to, to you that I've invested what I think I need to, to come to you confidently with the fact that I can't get what I want. So with that, I'll just pop, but I just wanted to get you my general sense. And again, it's not financial, as Matt has mentioned. Um, the ITIF payment is, you know, in excess of what I would pay to have these things installed. And again, I really want that, and it's fortunate and regrettable, so, you know, I just wanted to give you my sense before, maybe I'll move to the next stage.
Thank you. Richard, did you have something that you wanted to add?
No, I did not. I apologize for any confusion.
So just an additional question then, is there, um, um. A presentation that the drainage can't be re-engineered in order to provide the level enough spaces for the lift? Is there some way to get that engineered so that each space is more level? Even if they're, if they're stepped down as you go towards. I, I mean, so, so I guess the, the one constant that even if we were able to, uh, regrade this entire back parking lot. And, and somehow level it out, the approach, which is the, the dashed line that's in between the handicap space. And, uh, the space next to it has to stay less than a two, um, a two percent cross slope. So that virtually has to stay the same, and that goes out, you know, along that sixty-degree slope. So, uh, what, if, and, and this is sort of a, probably a better question for the engineer, but my understanding is, is that it won't. Only because we would need to come down a, a significant amount in order to, um. Beyond that, you know, that, that handicap spot, we'd need to go down a significant amount in order to get those remaining three spaces to, to be level. Uh, and the same thing for the, uh, the, the first space. So, I don't think that, because we can't change that middle, that middle space, we can't raise that up or down. It's, it sort of locks us into what we can do to the left and to the right of it, so. I don't think that even if we were to be able to, to make the drainage better, I don't think it's gonna change, unfortunately.
Thank you. Guess we need to have the motion.
But, Mr. Chair, if you could, it would be, um, all right, can you give a sense to the board before you take a motion?
Uh, you're looking for that in order to avoid a negative vote?
I, I am, and the reason is, is that, you know, I, I've been out, I, we all met on the site. Um, when I was retained, we met on the site, we reviewed everything, we had the engineers there. Um, before that, they had done the same thing, and, you know, we went out, we asked all the questions that everybody here is asking. And it just, it doesn't seem possible. Um, on the other hand. We have to have parking or we have to have relief, right? So, I, I would like to hear where the board is on it. I don't, I don't know how this is resolved, and I would like my client to be able to. Consider that before a negative vote happens. Because, you know, maybe the choice is, you can't build those, and so we have to go for a six or nine-month appeal. Which of course then would mean that we lose a commercial tenant, and we continue to have unoccupied residents. We have one resident, and that's it, and nobody else, because we don't, we don't have parking properly. And there's gonna, something's gonna have to happen. So, we continue to have an unoccupied building while we delay. In that appeal of the building inspector's determination, and that's a big decision to make. Letting you talk about the cost of the ITIF payments versus the, the facilities, it's. I can't have that done on the fly tonight, and so, yeah, I would like the respectfully request to give a sense to the board, given. The work that, that we've expressed, that we've gone through to get to where we are today before a final vote is taken.
About, about that approach. I guess there's two options. One is to, to look for continuance, the other is to, that it can set a sense of the board before taking a vote.
Rick, this is.
Yes, thank you.
This is Beth. Um. Is there a lot of feedback I can hear? Okay, um, so. I was on the board when we approved this, and I do think that the fact that the parking was all on-site. Was significant to. Our analysis of the project. I would like to see more, I guess, there's some contention about, um. Whether the handicapped spot needs to be there. I guess my question is, if the handicap spot did not need to be there. Would there be more potential for regrading and making these lifts work? I would like to see, you know, some more documentation just indicating that it's really impossible. Um, to put these in, because I do think that that was. You know, that gave the board a lot of assurance. This is a busy area. The fact that all the residential parking was gonna be on-site, I think, was, um, significant. Uh, and then I also, question-wise, I think Lisa, you said there would be four additional spaces. I think the summary that we got suggested it was six, so I am, um. Curious about the discrepancy. I'm still trying to sort through it, but. No, I'm torn. Um, you know, I think that. I would like to see more to indicate that residential parking spaces really cannot be. On-site and that the lifts wouldn't work.
Mr. Chair, let me just clarify the number of parking spaces, and I'll let Matt address the issue related to the, um, the, uh. Handicap space. So, um, Ms. Lyle, the, uh. The request is to have four additional ITIF spaces. This board already granted six ITIF spaces. We're only looking for one brand-new space, which is related to the increase of four hundred square feet in the commercial. So, um, you already granted six. And, and so we're looking for four ITIF spaces. They're not quote new spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, so I just wanted to quickly address, uh, I, after talking with Dennis Morel, uh, my understanding was regardless of. If there was five parking spaces on-site, he would still require there to be a, uh, an ADA space, and his argument was. If anybody pulls up here, uh, those economy spaces are actually required, uh, that needed an ADA space, they wouldn't be able to. And, uh, he welcomes the idea of, of appealing it, but, uh, my understanding is that appeal would take significantly longer. Uh, than to, um, go along with his, his, uh, settlement.
Right, so the question was, um, Ms. Delaw's question actually was. If there wasn't a handicap space there. Could you find, could you resolve the slope issue?
So, regardless of if there's a handicap space, the approach. So regardless of if there's a handicap space, the approach to the building still needs to be accessible. So that door, that cross slope, you know, that had that hash line, we need to stay as it's, so. You know, and and I've I've gone through this a number of times, we we've talked to several manufacturers, we've talked to. Millennium Engineering extensively to try to get any possible situation to work and. We we haven't figured it out, we can't figure out a solution that makes sense that. Will work, will keep the building still accessible by code and and be installed in a safe way, we just. We've been through this extensively, I I would, you know. We've we've had a lot of different conversations, but I just don't see. I don't see an available option because we we've sort of been through. Of the like a litany of different of different available options. Even if we were to to slope the first two spaces differently, we would. Violate the cross slope and the approach on the weight of the building, which is a building code issue, so. Sloping, you know, the the left two spaces differently or the right two, three spaces differently. Really all depends on where that door is located, if that door was. You know, pushed up a foot before we even started construction, then I I think there would have been a possibility. Because the first few spaces would be virtually flat. But because we have to come down to that that first door, that accessible door, there's really no way of adjusting the grade without. Violating that that code issue, that cross flow accessible path issue.
I think I think we really need to just keep it within the board at this point. So I guess I will ask then for a, as a sense of the board before we. Or I ask for a motion, I guess whether members feel that they. Would be opposed to granting this request and just I would just ask the board members to raise their hands. If they would be opposed to to granting this.
Said opposed.
I said opposed. You're saying you would be opposed?
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought I'd been that abundant.
I'm just asking for it at this point, just a sense, yeah.
Who would ask for continuance, Mr. Chair?
We're vote, I've got a motion to continue, when would you like to continue this?
Two weeks or a month, two weeks, when your next meeting?
Would have a motion to continue this to the.
A second.
Hold on a second, okay, we'll call on that, Walden?
Yes.
Jamie? Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Chair, yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our last public hearing is on the application of. President Stan for twenty-two twenty-four Market Street and others.
Chairman, members of the board, good evening, happy new year, good to be in front of them again. My name is Douglas Duchesne, I'm attorney with Finn and Nicholson here in Newburyport. And I represent the owners of twenty-two twenty-four Market Street.
Just say next then I'll.
Again, Douglas Duchesne, go to the next slide, please. To give you a project summary, and the board will recall that I was here earlier this year seeking approval of. One parking space associated with the redevelopment of the. Market Street Inn. So let me give you a quick summary of why we're here and what we're seeking. The developers are currently converting the property from its current use as a lodging house to the new use as an inn. You will recall that the building at two twenty-two twenty-four Market Street. And the building next door at twenty-six Market Street, and I'll show you a picture in a minute, but just to explain. They were connected some many years ago. And has been used in its entirety as an inn type of facility, although technically it was a lodging home. Since the early eighties, so this has been, you know, nearly fifty year ongoing use of this building. My clients wanted where went to the. The zoning board of appeals to get a permit to detach the buildings. And to renovate the inn, main inn building as an inn. So we did get that approval and so my current clients have detached the twenty-sixth Market Street. And they're restoring that to an allowed by right to family residential use, which I understand was its original use. In that process, as originally determined by the zoning enforcement officer. The planned conversion would require a special permit from this board. Under section seven A of the city's ordinances. For non-residential off-street parking for one space and you, this board was gracious enough to grant us that space. However, it has now been determined over the course of getting our demo permits and our building permits and starting the process. That while we do have six units in the building and that's what we proposed. To the the board, we actually have ten bedrooms, there are four two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom. And therefore, we should have been required to have a total of ten parking spaces, not six as originally thought. Our understanding and quite honestly, the information that we submitted to. The zoning enforcement officer did indicate six units. What we didn't indicate was that of those six units, a number of them had two bedrooms and. I guess there's no one to blame for that mistake, except to say that I'm personally responsible for filing and making sure everything was correct and. I may, perhaps I should have seen it, but the bottom line is that my client certainly. You know, applied for that original one permit based on the zoning enforcement office's determination, based on the information that was provided to her. And, you know, we we thought we were doing the right thing, and if you go to the next slide and play with. So just to give you a picture here, to the right is the main inn building, which is currently under renovations to be. Developed as a six unit, a ten-bedroom inn and to the left and you can still see the interconnecting stairway. Which is now gone is twenty-sixth Market Street, which is being renovated as a a two-store, excuse me, two-family residential use. So just so you can see physically what's what's going on here, the next slide, please. Our existing conditions, as I said, the property has been used as a lodging house, boarding house since nineteen eighty. And in conjunction with the twenty-sixth Market Street, had a total of eight units with ten bedrooms. However, in establishing the pre-existing non-conforming use, that the non-conform use was a boarding house. Making the lot pre-existing non-conforming as to parking. There was no off-street parking spaces while five were required for the pre-existing non-conforming use. In other words, while the reality was that this property has been used. As eight units, ten bedrooms for, you know, since nineteen eighty and. Believe me, we did an amazing amount of historical research to work with the historical commission and so. Excuse me, the zoning board to get to this point. The reality was that the zoning officer had determined what pre-existing non-conformities we had, including parking. Had to establish what, not what the actual use was, but the. Legal non-conforming use and that was as a boarding house. Which allowed us five spaces, so that's where we got the five space, sort of pre-existing non-conforming status. But the reality is is that the. That the actual use was ten bedrooms, eight units, now why do I even mention that and it's just because in those. You know, in the forty plus years, forty-three years that this has been in existence. And operated with the ten bedrooms. There were no, there's been no parking issues that I'm not aware of, the former owners, again, they ran this for forty years and they. Didn't indicate that they had any parking space problems, so. So at the bottom point, if you would, the building has been determined by the zoning enforcement officer to have. A total of five pre-existing non-conforming spaces. And now, and as I said, we originally needed this total of six, we came to this board, we received one. So that we thought we were all set, but now that we have been found to need. Ten spaces and maybe if you could grab to the next. Slide, you know, because the proposed inn will require ten spaces and because he and his grandfather asked only five. Five additional spaces are required, however, we do have a previous special permit which allowed for one, so we have six. So we're seeking a special permit or an amendment to the special permit from this board. Under your parking regulation ordinance to allow for four additional required parking spaces to be off-site. Within municipal garage with payment into the ITIF fund as we did with the original spot. This use structure was lawfully existing in December of two thousand seventeen. It is currently located within three hundred feet of the municipal parking structure that is located in the DOD or DCOD. Our off-street parking requirement applies to four spaces that are required now for the change of use. And I I truly feel that the requested use is essential. And or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. There's no question that in researching this and working on this project for a couple of years. It's been apparent that the city is in dire need of a lodging, short-term lodging for visitors. I know the city has done all sorts of things to try and develop, you know, hotels, motels. Type of lodge, ins, type of settings and this is a great opportunity. For an existing structure or an existing inn that is in significant disrepair to be repaired. Restored, brought up to historical standards, I mean, the boards have been quite excited about this project. My clients, based on those permits, have purchased the property and borrowed in excess of a million and a half dollars to renovate it. And they are very excited to to be able to provide this much-needed and essential service to the town, to the city. But unfortunately, we run into this issue. And so we're asking the board to consider providing us four additional spaces. Is within the garage through your ITIF program. Be happy to answer any questions you might have, I do have a picture of the site plan and a picture of the building if if you feel those are necessary.
Thank you, questions for the board? I have a question just about the history of this, when I look at the decision. April twentieth. When the conditions was, the condition, the special condition. There's priority issues of a building permit for the proposed project. The required intermodal transportation improvement fund payment should be processed with the city. In accordance with section seven A of the report, zoning ordinance. Such payment should be part of the application for said building permit in relation to this project. Now, given that the building is under renovation, as I understand.
We're in demolition.
Okay, so you haven't received a building permit. And you said it was in process. That's how it came up, it came up because an application for building permit was submitted and a new. Number bedroom issue came up.
I believe, again, as I mentioned earlier, that's how it became apparent that the bedroom count wasn't. Had to be covered during the prior presentation, application.
And just to clarify, as you may have heard in the previous. Presentation, you're not getting parking spaces in the parking lot, you're getting the payment into a fund.
Understood.
Because you're near. Whether any, any other questions or comments at this point before I open it up to the board? If not, then is there anybody in the public who wishes to be, make a comment? Or ask a question? It's again, state unit in the address.
My name's Eric Schover, I live at twenty-eight Market Street. I don't know anything about town ordinances, but is the idea that the payment into the fund means that. Like the the people staying at the inn could then park on the street, it wouldn't necessarily be the garage, is that what you're saying?
Correct, the is is the city councilor pointed out earlier. It's a, it is not a, it's not connected to. Public facilities, only the way the ordinance is written is if a property is within a certain distance from a municipal parking lot or garage. Then there is the option for the property owner to make a payment into the city's parking lot. Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll post the public hearing. Any comments from the board or your motion?
Yes, again, I think I'll speak on this side. I completely understand all of the applicants. His benefits for, I mean, his explanation of benefits, there's no debating that, at least from my perspective. What what is missing is there's always the good pro quo or what is the opposite side and that is. How is this neighborhood exacerbated by incremental parking? I I can't, to me, it's it's not a sad argument to say, well, we haven't had a problem in the past. You have to go by facts, the facts are the zoning ordinance, that's the only thing that. I feel is my duty to abide by and part of this is is again, is the impact on the neighborhood. And while the impact in a city may be positive, I at this point feel that the impact in the immediate neighborhood. Would be would be negative. The only way I see myself, you know, perhaps it would be informative for me is if just when you provide something out to. Three hundred feet or five hundred feet, if every single person came within three hundred feet or five hundred foot. And came inside the letter, say I'm okay with it, that would obviously change my opinion because then the neighborhood is. Providing evidence that they're okay with it and as I just mentioned, that to me is my biggest concern. So that would be one way, perhaps not the only way. And to me would show that the neighborhood not adversely impacted because the neighborhoods are participating in that decision.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond.
Any other comments?
I I. I guess I I don't disagree with what what Don is saying that, you know, adding. Adding five cars to crowded residential streets is something that we have talked about in. In the context of other discussions extensively. And, you know, I I think this is the same thing all over again and, you know, I I think it's very difficult to approve. Putting putting five additional spaces on on what is likely a crowded residential street.
I guess. My mind is, there is something different about this, which is that, you know, I think we all. I think when this was approved. There was an understanding of what the project was and that there would be no parking provided by the project. And for whatever reason, it was it was missed, but the. The distinction between bedrooms and units. So I I actually have less of a concern about this. Yes, if there's no other comment.
Can we look at a site plan, do you have a site plan?
And was that, that was submitted with part of your materials?
I believe the the last page of the the submitted this this. Handout is.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you did add it there.
And I actually have hard copies of that. Members would think it'd be easier to see in here.
Not quite the resolution, but if you want to speak to uh, into that. Excuse me. Sorry. It's not quite a clear resolution, but if you wanted to speak to whatever.
Sure. As you recall, um, from our earlier hearing and as depicted in the site plan, um, there, there is no off-street parking in this facility and there, there hasn't been. Um, I do believe there are a couple of spaces to the left of twenty-six Market Street that are off-street spaces. Um, but with respect to the inn and the use of the inn, um, it has always been on-street parking. And I, I know Mr. Walters suggested that, you know, will this have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood? And, and I guess saying that, you know, will this generate more on-street parking than is currently um, occurring? Um, I would respectfully say no, in that, uh, again, uh, we have evidence and, and, you know, it's documented that this has been utilized for over forty years uh, with ten bedrooms in up to eight-unit configuration. Uh, we are proposing six units with uh, four two-bedrooms and two one-bedrooms. And with the payment into the ITIF fund, it, it, while it isn't a guarantee, it does provide our future patrons with an ability to park. And if you're going to spend uh, the weekends uh, at an inn, uh, in Newbury Court or anywhere else, um, the fact that the uh, inn doesn't have on uh, its own off-street parking, um, you know, always raises a question, well, we'll have to park off, you know, on, on the street. But in this case, we have an opportunity that there is a municipal parking garage three hundred feet away, and if I'm coming to this uh, inn from out of town, I'm certainly going to ask, well, where do I park? And I'm going to be told, well, there's limited on-street parking. But oh, by the way, there is a municipal parking garage within three hundred feet, which is the perfect solution. So I don't think that granting these additional four spaces is going to result in detrimental impact in the neighborhood, especially when that is weighed against the fact that the the redevelopment of this property, the disconnection of twenty-six, the beautification of this building and, you know, the creation of a, another high-end inn type of facility, it's going to have a beneficial impact on the neighborhood, I think. We're going to have a very different clientele than has been potentially um, utilizing this facility for some time. Um, there won't be the long-term kind of rentals that may have occurred during pre-previous ownership. This will become a high-end, you know, inn that people utilize when coming to visit the company out of the city. So I think overall, yes, um, you know, um, I don't think we're providing required, requiring any more on-street parking than has been in effect for forty years. So I don't, I respectfully don't agree that allowing this to continue with ten bedrooms with this um, payment into the fund is more detrimental at all. In fact, I think it helps to address the parking demand that has been associated with this building now and will going forward. Um, we're providing an opportunity to those people. And I think that was the general basis of the ordinance to begin with. We're a city and it's tough. Parking is always the biggest thing, but we need to support, you know, this kind of uh, facility in, in the city. And uh, I think we can do this without having detrimental impact to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Could I just add, is overnight parking allowed in the garage down the street?
Uh, sorry, I'm on the parking, but I leave the garage as that. I don't know where the parking was. I think I'll have to recall if I actually.
If I may, Chair.
Mark, could you come up to this?
There's, there's two things here. Um, we, we have passed an ordinance that for inn uh, guests, we have a fifteen-dollar overnight parking pass that they can purchase through the clerk's office uh, that will allow them to park overnight. Uh, in general, there is no parking, overnight parking in any of the municipal lots, anywhere, except for the basement of the municipal lot by permanent.
Can you clarify, uh, that fifteen-dollar a night thing for the inn, is that for um, lots and garage or only for the garage?
Just the garage.
And it's only for lower-level garage?
No.
Oh, so anywhere in the garage, in, in customers would have, you know, so it's different, it is different for an inn than it is for a residential inn?
Yes, because of everything uh, the applicant has.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Jamie?
Well, it's just deliberation. Uh, I, I find that that last fact's quite compelling. I was already pretty much there. Um, given the consistency of the building in that neighborhood and the lack of real effective change, I don't know for sure that an inn would have less parking than a lodging house, but it seems intuitive that it probably could. Uh, at least there's no uh, intuitive sense that it would be greatly expanded. So uh, I'm, I would support this, and that last fact just really seals the deal for me. I think that's and I didn't know that, uh, so it's really good to learn that about the city. That's a good, good policy that we have, so. I'm a supporter of the.
This is Beth. I would agree that the fact that overnight guests can um, park in the lot makes me more likely to approve um, the request. Uh, I was just curious, Andy, I don't have the parking um, information in front of me, but I, I'm just curious what the basis for a boarding house with ten bedrooms only requiring five um, parking spaces versus an in-use requiring ten. So I, I gather that in-use is based on the number of bedrooms? Is there?
Yeah, I see that Attorney Dushane wants to speak, and I think what uh, what was presented earlier was the fact that it was credit given for five spaces previously based on the document for we use, and maybe that's what you're referring to. Uh, I think the zoning administrator was basically been looking back at the history of this property, looking to confirm, you know, for the ordinance, when someone, you know, at a point frozen in time by the capital, when someone is given credit for any previous spaces and it actually is tied properly to, uh, you know, what the ordinance said at the time, and, and uh, so in this case, uh, five spaces, we're giving credit, but beyond that, the applicant would have to figure out how to provide those either on-site or through an ITIF. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but um, and I see that Mr. Dushane wants to speak that as well.
Well, I was actually going to say the same is that, um, again, while, you know, there's clear evidence and, and uh, that this has been utilized again, with twenty-two, twenty, uh, excuse me, with the twenty-six Market Street building for an eight-unit, ten-bedroom inn, um, when we were looking at how we could get the, so to speak, grandfathered parking non-existing, we, we couldn't, we couldn't rely on that use um, with the eight units, including twenty-six, rather than the zoning enforcement officer and I uh, determined historically what the main structure was allowed to be used for, and that's where she concluded that we would have five grandfathered spots. Uh, because legally, they couldn't say this has been a ten-bedroom, eight-unit inn, including twenty-six Market Street, and therefore your grandfather for all tax, or I would have never been here. Um, instead, it was determined that it was a reasonable conclusion that the legal use would have been for the, the boarding house, which would have been five. But the reality, folks, is that it's been ten bedrooms for forty years.
Thank you. Um, could I motion? No further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the outputs first. Second.
Um, so we have um, draft findings uh, in the staff report. Um, I don't think we need to read those draft findings. Basically, the bottom line is that we would be changing the previous special permit from one of it in ITIF for one parking space to ITIF in five parking spaces. And I assume it would be using the same dollar amount as in previous um, previous uh, calculation of seven thousand.
Uh, yes, and actually, the, there is actually bullet point language we could use part of the ordinance because of the CPI index uh, increase, so we would just use that standard language thereby, uh, allowing the zoning administrator to verify, you know, properly if they've provided that as well.
But one people load the uh, whatever they want, but I saw the dollar.
Seven, six, nine, three. Correct, correct.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? If not, we'll call the rule. Uh, Alden?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Don?
Go.
Richard?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. Again, I agree.
Um, the next item on the agenda is the request for minor modification is three-door override and is previously stated. There's a request to continue that to
Uh, the first of February.
First, the first meeting of February. Uh, do we need a motion to grant?
Uh, you don't technically have a lot of occasion. Uh, I would suggest that the director you know, wanting to continue this item, but it's not actually a priority, so it's not really necessary.
But just for short, I'm thinking, could I have a motion to renew the this uh, request for minor modification to the first meeting of February?
No worries.
Okay, thank you. Second, second, please. I will call Alden.
Yes.
Excuse me, I have a question on that. Um, do you mind reminding me, did the uh, vote on whether this is a minor? I don't think so.
That still is.
That's still.
Yes.
Well? Amy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Yeah.
And chair votes, yes. Okay, thank you. Um, the next item is the approval of minutes, and frankly, I have no chance to.
I'm sorry, I was on some leave.
I know. Um, so I would, I would request that we just defer this to the next meeting. Uh, are there any other updates from from the time?
Uh, just a reminder, I think some of us have already spoken about it, but the uh, the DHD guidelines, revenue gate, there is um, trying to get up that, just got a little more detail now, and this month going into February, we have a period of time in which we'll have the zoning ordinance, but that's obviously um, some work. The office, planning board, city council, uh, and, and others to have some discussions, stakeholders about, um, you know, what's the proper zoning amendments to make to satisfy that aspect for requirement, uh, regular requirement for DHD. Um, so, you know, if you want to be involved, then let us know. I know from this uh, particular board, uh, we talked about rigging all of them being sort of, um, at least for that initial work, putting together some options, looking at what we think is realistic and reasonable and appropriate, and then circling back so that we can kind of, um, you know, move things along more efficiently for everyone else to have some options on the table and kind of work through some of those things in advance. Um, there are some other zoning amendments. We can always talk about those. Uh, there's housekeeping things we'd like to do. I, I made note of ones that came up that might be relevant for discussion purposes with the council. Um, uh, and then there's some other housekeeping things we'd like, we sort of figured after the holiday season we pick up. Um, I talked with Rick earlier about the fact that the board modification of members would be taken up end of the month by the council or committee and so forth. Um, that would create the mechanism by which the board's um, uh, reduction would happen to seven members plus twelve minutes. Um, you know, pending the uh, the membership would be reduced to that threshold um, for the, for the turnover. Um, but if you have any other questions or areas you want to meet address, I mean, you know.
I guess the only thing that I see in my calendar that there's a public forum on the economic development strategy next week.
Yeah, thank you. I do for that. I think the whole point, whether or not there's, uh, that if you're able to attend that, that's great. Uh, welcome your input on that. The idea here is probably congrats of economic development plan, whether more detailed than say the economic development chapter of the last master plan. Um, again, everything in there and the universe of potential recommendations is always down to what's actually feasible. Um, so I, you know, we're interested in getting your thoughts overall, the consultants putting together the data, but it really is, I think, up to us as local officials um, to decide what is actually realistic and reasonable in terms of, you know, is a position created to focus on that, um, other areas of zoning we want to change that, you know, will impact economic development going forward, things like that. So if there are any thoughts on that area whatsoever, feel free to come. We welcome you to participate in that discussion at that meeting. It's one of, I think, the last sort of broad public forum we'll be having in relation to the um, economic development land for broad stakeholder inputs. We try to invite as many people as possible to that.
Um, in, in addition to the uh, two to six Market Street, do you know of anything else that we're going to be seeing at our next meeting?
Uh, not to my knowledge, no.
Basically, kind of like.
Yeah, yeah, I, that may well be the case as of right now, but uh, I, I haven't seen anything large on the horizon, let's say, um, you know, in the next month or two.
Uh, I, just one question if I may. One is, um, and it did come before us, is it true that the Cutter Fire Station will be referred back to a committee of the city council because it's over budget for a myriad of reasons?
Uh, yes, in synopsis, yes, there is a higher number now from the cost estimating, um, and that's partly a number of different reasons for market, you know, pushing up the design a little further, uh, things like that. So the original estimate and the original appropriation by the council would be sufficient, uh, and so we're expediting at least that discussion. Um, you know, I, we have to make a decision, I guess, whether or not we're going out the original program or whether it's being reduced. Um, I suspect there's still a desire to have that project done for various reasons, you know, for your, your pipeline, but um, but uh, yes, it will be revisiting the dollar amount that's incorporated for the construction side of this.
And then I guess my other question is on Waterfront West. Uh, I had, is it, are you able to confirm that there have been some discussions between the developer and the mayor's office and/or their staff uh, on this? And, and if so, is there even a preliminary timeline when something might be brought forth to this board or to the public?
That's a great question. Uh, I would have to say, I think, after the holiday season, and I can't speak for the administration directly, but I think that the, our hope is that we would circle back with development team. Uh, they had basically committed back to the mayor that they had received some, you know, initial feedback in the city about what might be viable. They're looking into that and wanted to circle back with their thoughts on it, and had not done so thus far. Um, I think our hope is to get some feedback from them as to where that is, and at, at that point, I think it will be largely up to the administrations and council members and obviously when they put the others to, from the advisory group that the mayor has set up to determine whether or not it's appropriate in timing to bring anything forward, or whether or not we're still, you know, truly in that, that there's too many things that are, um, you know, not reliable, let's say, between the development team and the state, um, thereby bringing the question whether or not we want to bend the ordinance right away for any integration with them versus just for our own work.
And like, just to follow up, and you know, we had our, um, subcommittee meeting, our committee meetings last, last summer in Florida. It's on me to, to actually put that into writing. I've done, I've done some work on it. I've started a a bit of a presentation. I've requested a meeting with the mayor to talk about a number of things, and that's one of the things I'd like to talk to him about. But I think we, I think it's appropriate. We can talk about it at a future meeting. And maybe if we have a late meeting at our next meeting, I think we can talk about them to see, you know, to bring forward the kinds of things that we talked about in our ad hoc committee and some of the ideas and, and kind of uh, precedent, you know, design ideas, design concepts, it would, it would make sense.
And I think there's a real desire there from, uh, from the ad hoc committee, the mayor, and the ad hoc committee, and from the attorney, uh, who's working with us to, you see how the ordinance, uh, cross, you know, amendments or language that were done by the subcommittee here, how that might integrate into, um, sort of the, um, the assumptions, let's say, about what would be viable here from zoning amendment, permitting process, uh, design guidelines, you know, how that would be sort of integrated into what they've already discussed.
I think that, for me, I mean, the hardest part is putting into words the design concepts. And so, you know, we can, we can show pictures, but in, in ultimately, the ordinance has that words, so we need to figure out how to do that. Well, I'll, I'll come up with a graphic discussing.
Could be commented.
Well, it will be commented. We'll have to have pictures. Definitely will be pictures, but you need, but you ultimately need them tested.
Yeah.
So, his pictures can be interpreted in all sorts of different ways by depending on your point of view, so. We need to figure out what our intent is. You know, is, are we talking about just a lintel? Or are we talking about lintel and brick? You know, what are we doing?
Sorry, if I could, one other mention, maybe, where, uh, the, uh, I think I mentioned previously working on the housing production plan update. That's our affordable housing plan. The state calls it housing production. Now, uh, same thing, uh, the idea being that we actually have to make an effort every year to, to try to produce housing, you know, not just, you know, create a plan for, but actually produce them. Um, we are currently in the safe harbor status because we've made progress in creating units, particularly because of the forty-yard district in the, you know, one three-bustaway. Um, and, um, and with the, the one project that's approved but not yet under construction. Um, but, um, but we do need to look at the housing production plan and have that updated again, and so uh, we are unsuccessful in getting any consultants' proposals that were, you know, within what we needed in our timeframe, so we're actually planning on working with the regional planning agency, uh, following our, uh, larger umbrella they're already working on. We were originally expediting it to try to do our own timeline and be a little bit faster than them. It, it wasn't paying out that way. So we kind of pull, we're rolling into the fold of them. It'll still be customized for our needs, and so getting input from the planning board is important, getting input from the finance and trust is important, getting input from the city council, the administration uh, and our office, you know, and others is important. Uh, if you have any interest in getting involved in that, like Caitlin and I know, and uh, we'll be working with MPPC as our consultant, so to speak. um, to develop that plan with all the state of living that you might expect.
And just so you know, a couple of weeks ago, I was meeting with the staff at M V P C and talking about this, and and they weren't really clear at that point about the city's need for just standard safe harbor, and so they have a lot of flexibility. Um, overall, the project has to be done by, I think, June of twenty twenty-four, but they're going to be prioritizing communities and city investment.
Yeah, and one thing that we know about that, I guess, just to make sure, at least, since we cover all the same pages, uh, well, we could expedite that process a little bit with them, I don't know that it'll actually functionally make a difference at the end of the day, only because the certification that would be needed of that plan, actually producing the units, well, it doesn't look like it's on trajectory to be there, so even if we were to have a valid plan on record that's moved by the state, which is great to have, that's only one of the prerequisites to getting a certification with the safe harbor status. And because we're not, after the forty-yard district, we'll have done thus far, because we're not continuing creating more units, um, and the sentence numbers, the twenty-twenty sentence numbers being used will reduce our, you know, percentage a little bit. It doesn't look like it'll actually, even if the plan is produced, you know, every once later, it does not look like it's going to mutually affect our safe harbor status expiration, uh, which is expected, basically, I think, uh, spring of, uh, spring of uh forty-four and, you know.
Man, you guys, just so everybody understands that, everybody may understand, the safe harbor is basically, um, it keeps us in control of our own zoning. And once we're out of that, then uh, comprehensive projects can come in and override ours, so it's, it's important to keep our, to keep control of our planning zoning, to have that in places as well as we can.
I have a question to do on that. Have we ever been out of safe harbor?
Uh, this is the first time that I've been here, we've been in safe harbor.
Right, so, i- i- and not to make light of your comment, not because, you know, I'm I'm not saying history repeats or doesn't repeat itself, but in the past, we've been uh, you know, possibly susceptible to to some type of forty R or whatever, and then not controlling our destiny, and for whatever reason, it it hasn't occurred, it doesn't mean we should not plan for that, and really, which dovetails into my second question, assuming it is twenty twenty-four, are you aware of the, anyone doing something to increase zoning for affordable housing? And the one that I've mentioned, a while back to one of the city councils, and in my days, but I'm really following up on it, is it always has seemed to me that the old K-Mot property, independent of of the owner, of having some type of affordable housing facing low street or whatever, would would make perfect sense to me. But, uh, and that's the only area that I know of any significant land mass or whatever, square footage that we do something, I'm just curious.
It's a, it's it's great timing, you're answering your question, actually, because attorney muted, actually called me today, and was asking about the process with the M V T guidelines and the D H C D guidelines. And I said, you know, it is so is the opportunity there to look at the story avenue area as well as part of this umbrella, you know, discussion about the zoning uh changes, obviously, we have Waterfront West, it's potentially, you know, a discussion in play, we have the forty-yard district and potentially building off of that, obviously, it's a logical extension. Um, and we also have the story avenue area, where we've had some discussion about it, we've talked about the benefits of adding some residential layer, you know, modifying that area over time, maybe. Um, and um, and so that is potentially, uh, an area that we want to look at as a as a extension, that isn't necessarily even geographically connected, but uh, but is potentially beneficial to the city to change the uses that are allowed over there over time, and maybe this is one way to do that.
And I think that, you know, again, M V T in communities, I think as long as the majority of your district is within a half-mile radius of what I can do, you can still do something outside of that.
Agreed, and so I, to me, I I definitely say it's completely uh open as an offer for us and potentially beneficial, depending on how we, well, feel about it overall, and how it fits in the overall, you know, regulatory regime, um, the D H C D guidelines aren't directly addressing affordable units, they're basically saying, you know, prioritize any housing units, you know, being produced or being allowed under zoning. Uh, but uh, but it could help to facilitate not only housing, but also affordable housing to a certain extent, yeah.
Anything else? Not, I have a motion to adjourn.
So, move, call it.
Second, okay, Alden.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you, Don, for reminding me about.